Welcome to the East Dundee Special Board Meeting, dated Monday, June 14th, 2021.
6 o'clock, Catherine, take your role.
Trusty Mahoney, here. Trusty Andreessen, here. Trusty Coonsy, here.
Here.
Trusty Britton, here. Trusty Saviano, here. Trusty Triber, here. President Lyman, here.
The rest of the members.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, let me get to our first item, that's public comment on any agenda items. Is there anybody who would like to address the board for agenda items?
Yeah.
You'd like to stand, just stay green.
Susan Powellman. Just a quick note about myself. I'm a P&amp;D Commissioner for East Dundee. I was conceived on Berwickton Avenue. I live on Berwickton Avenue. Pretty sure I'm gonna die up there today. My grandfather Henry Grant was a village trustee. And his name is on the bronze plaque on the East Dundee Bridge. One of my cousins also served as Board President a few years ago. So I feel I've got some skin in the game here. And I am so disappointed in how this situation was handled. I think you should resign tonight. I don't think you belong on the board. If you can't get along with staff and you post stuff like that, you are not trustworthy. You do not belong here at all. You embarrass the board. You embarrass the people of Dundee. You embarrass me, my neighbors. And for the board, I hope you will get your right thinking together and retain the subject, the person that I'm talking about. I wish you were here today because I have some very good advice for her. I hope she comes. I wish you were here. I have just really good advice for her. And I have no doubt that parties can work together professionally. My husband and myself worked together professionally for over 25 years. We've been married 53 years. I'm still alive and healthy. If you can't work with staff, shame on you. Staff right now is more important than you are. We need them more than we need you. So I recommend again, please resign from this board. And as far as the other subjects here, the trustees, Jim Carlini, and Frank Scarpelli, why on earth would we go back to the problems we had before? And start all over again? And what have they done for us lately? I strongly suggest that they are not appointed. If you want some details, I have plenty. Talk afterwards. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
I'm really not happy to be here tonight. Really not happy. I'd rather be home, knowing I can trust my representatives, my elected officials. But I can't be there because I don't trust you. In regard to Sky and Jason C., I trust the ruling of the attorney of the board by the village. He has paid to keep our best interests at heart, first and foremost. Secondly, should it replace what we made, it should be someone of uncrushable character. Someone without any potential conflict of interest. We know Frank has already had a conflict of interest for this very thing. Why would we want to go to that vote again? And there's a whole lot of bad press about it. I don't know him personally. I can't make a judgment. But there's a reason why he was kind of instilled. Decisions of this board should be made to benefit nobody except the presidents of East Dundee. Not some businessmen who don't even live in East Dundee. I strongly agree with the board that Mr. Andreessen should stay on board. I don't know Mr. Carlini. I have nothing to say about him, but I'm really against Frank Scarpelli. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name is Mary Kay Lakey. I reported these board meetings for 15 years, and I know what the rights of the president are. I also want to say that Jeff Lyman got elected for a reason. Because we want change here. We want, we didn't like the way things were going. And I think we should give him a chance and trust the decisions that he's making and and I don't think somebody didn't run and wasn't appointed should be on the board by I don't understand anything. But anyways, I just want to, I think we should give Jeff a chance because he was elected by the public of this town.
Could I say something else?
I think Jeff was elected despite a vote because Leo did not put any effort into being reelected. I don't trust you. I really don't. You handled this so badly. You have hurt so many people. Been on the front page of the paper, inside the paper. What on earth are you thinking? This is not professional. This is not how businesses are done. I think you owe the village and a lot of people an apology. Please give apology.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? No?
Since my name was addressed, should I be able to defend myself?
If you'd like to address the board, you may.
I'm James Carlini. I was a trustee of East Dundee before we had to be part of the Norris Board. I don't understand why we have so much money to pay these people. We have like 30,000, we have 3,000 people in this village and we're paying a staff that's the size of 30,000, who drafts a city of 30,000. Why do we need assistance to the village administrator? Why do we need assistance to the police chief? It's a small town. As far as I'm concerned, how many people in this board have ever been gone to an IML conference to learn what your job is? You know what even IML stands for? Illinois Municipal League. I suggest that new members that are on this board to go there and go for more than one session or one day. You've got to learn about what your job is. You're fiduciarily, you have a fiduciary responsibility to all the residents in this village. And to spend money and waste money like you've done in the last four years, it's crazy. And I don't know where other people are, but I take a real good look at this village and where we've come from and what it was when I was a trustee. First of all, you wouldn't be sitting in here, you'd be sitting in a trailer that was rented for years. As far as I'm concerned.
And that's a good thing? And that's a good thing?
Yeah, you have a brand new police department.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah, brand new building. Yeah. And you have a downtown that's a lot better than what it was 2002 years ago. And you have a lot more of a tax base than West Dundee has now. You didn't have that before. They've got an empty mall. They wish they had the tax base that we have here. Anyway, I would just suggest to all the board members to wake up and realize that there's a lot of people that are not happy with your performance in the last four to five years, and that we need to get back to having some responsibilities for budgets and making sure we don't overspend and get back to free garbage pickup. Oh, you like to pay money? If you like to pay money, that's fine with you. We don't need all this staff, and we certainly don't even pay the payroll that we do.
May I be addressed?
This
That's all right.
I'm not done yet.
Okay.
This isn't a late forest. And as far as I'm concerned, you should get a second opinion on your lawyer as far as if you're really seated. Because there's a lot of people that are in different areas of the legal profession in Illinois that say, you shouldn't be sitting there at this time.
We haven't heard from anyone.
Well, you have a budget. You have a budget. You have a budget for an independent counsel, hire somebody. That's all.
Now, may I be addressed? Briefly. I'll be very brief, Jeff. Lucy Galap, by the way, everybody knows. Sir, all of those things have a member of Leo. All of those things. All of those things have a member of Leo. So yes, I've lived here for 32 years. I know exactly what this town was like 15 years ago. I know exactly what this town was like 20 years ago. And I don't object to paying for garbage because it's a service. You're providing me a service and I'm paying for it. Big deal. Big deal. I love this town. I love the way it went with this board, with Leo in charge. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
As long as everybody's getting seconds. I just want to say this. I think Jim Carlini would be great on our board again and a wonderful help. And I have all of the old board meetings on tape at home if anybody needs to see the promises and why about the garbage pickup, how it was included in our property taxes, I believe.
Home and sales tax, actually. Initially, it was property tax and then home and sales tax.
Okay, so anyways.
Okay, one more time.
Okay, one more time. And Jim can talk louder than I can. Well, let me tell you, I remember when he got on the board and what he did before he got on the board, and it was not nice. It was wrong. And I'm absolutely embarrassed that he even wants to be on the board and the board is considered okay, like I said, you guys want detail, give me later.
Okay, thank you. Would there be anybody else who would like to address the board?
With your permission, there are two people that want to come today, and it's me and a commission to read in their statement. All right, Chris Kennedy, just wanted to go on the record that Brad and Jennifer were phenomenal to work with, and East Dundee was a very well-run town. Now with Lyman as president, everything is falling apart right when we need steady guidance as we try to pull ourselves as businesses out of the whole code system. And we would like us to focus on what's important, what we need for the business of the village and stop this back and forth. Also, another resident, by the person's name was Linda. In fact, a lot of people are very afraid of retaliation to any kind of statements they're gonna make because that's the atmosphere that they're seeing in the village right now. So Linda and I can share that with you. Please continue to object and reject Jeff Lyman's request to appoint, and this actually came to everybody on the board, to appoint, reject Jeff Lyman's request to appoint Frank Scarpelli to our East Dundee Board.
Jeffrey, I can't hear you back here.
Okay, sure, I'm sorry. I thought I had a lot of voices. Please continue to object, reject Jeff Lyman's request to appoint Frank Scarpelli to our East Dundee Board. We do not need issues that Scarpelli caused in the past when he was on the board. He's already on the park township board, and he brings nothing but issues wherever he goes. There are reasons he had so many lawsuits brought against him in the past, and our little vision village doesn't need issues and the risks that he brings. And that's, that's all I have. And there was one other, actually, there was one other resident, but I did not obtain approval to go there. So I did not do that. But he runs along the same lines.
Anybody else who would like to address the board?
Yes, I would just make one comment response to, I know the comments of me and John Louie. And that is, it's easy to take a look at salaries in the vacuum, but you have to look at the results to get out those salaries. When I began this board four years ago, we were operating at a deficit. We had a boat with a whole lot of holes in it. Four years later, you know, say what you want about salaries, we're operating at a surplus. And during a year in which we had the greatest pain epidemic on this planet in 110 years, and in which the primary source of revenue for this village were all shut down, big restaurants, bars, what have you, the administration somehow found a way to do a seven-figure surplus. So you can complain about all the salaries that you want, but you got to look at results. I would rather spend $100 to make $200 than spend $50 to lose another 20.
And to that point with the salaries, I know on some of the social media, there were salary.com, another one, I think you posted some of them, Mary Kay. And I want you to be aware and everybody to be aware, because I did exactly the same thing. And salary.com is all, you put it on there, it's not in any way, you volunteer the information and it's crowdsourced. It is not the totality of all of the salaries and comparisons between the population, the EAB, the number of staff that village employs. And I'm happy to have, to send you a comparison that I did that was pulled from, at all villages in and counties in Illinois. You need to document that. There is a huge document and spreadsheet, and I am happy to provide that spreadsheet as well as the takeaways and the
We have barely 3,000 people. We are a Chevy town, not a Cadillac town.
That's all I have to say to that. If you want the facts, I will be happy to share the facts. Just email me and I will send them to you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? Okay, seem none. Going to consent agenda, which we do not have for tonight. Proceed to other agenda items, the first which where I will address the board being the corporate authorities. Jeff, I believe this should be done in closed session under the under the rules of the Obermeads Act subsection C.1, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Right, well, thank you, Scott. We're gonna do it right now. We'll get this done. It'll be in one
I'll raise a question of privilege, which takes priority over what you're about to say, and I will make a motion that will immediately adjourn to executive session. Under the rules of the Illinois Boarding Act, five acts, the I L C S, 120 slash 2, C.1, personnel and legal counsel.
Catherine, will you take your role?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
No.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Triber?
No.
Okay, well, it looks like the items have it, so if there is nothing else, then would appear as though the rest of this discussion is going to be on very closed doors.
I do wonder if we could just move that item to the end of the agenda.
I'd be okay with that.
The rest of the problem is here. If that's what you're trying to do.
What, really? My reasons?
Well We would go to the end of the meeting.
We would move
I would wonder if I could ask, what it is you're afraid to let the public know that I have to offer the reasons I made the decision that I did?
I don't think I made the meeting that
Didn't run out of binding any of the meetings that here. What I'm saying is that these good people came here to find out what I had to say. I made a decision to release our village administrator, and by ordinance, by law, I have to provide the criteria that I used to make that decision. Now, your board members are taking that away from you, so give them a call.
Can I, can I Jeff, can I ask I was hearing based on what I saw last week, that you had to provide your reasoning to the board.
And that's what I'm doing, and there's nothing in ordinance that requires
Close session. Because it's a personal
Just, Melina, will you elaborate, please?
This is a question.
Close session.
There is a case that deals with the same issue, and the court in that case indicated in appellate court decision that the reasons that must be given by the village president, which must be given to the board, can be done in closed session. They can also be done in open session. It can be done in right so it's up to the board. And if there's a motion to go into closed session, that takes precedence if it passed in the discussion. Which my reason means to be closed session because that's how the vote works, but it didn't have to be closed session.
It doesn't say anything on here.
Well, it doesn't really matter, but I would
I can address that. Closed sessions do not need to be on an agenda including a special meeting.
I'm not sure about that.
He's the lawyer.
We don't have, I mean, it's only proper agenda, Scott.
Okay, you guys, the executive session is
So I say transparency. Transparency and open
Transparency. We have a problem nationally. Let's get up with transparency at least in East Dundee.
Jim, we'll figure this one out. Thank you. If the board has already voted that this go into executive session, then that's where it's gonna go. But I would like for some of the board members who've gone ahead and agreed to this to perhaps state why you would want it in executive session as opposed to right now, open. What is it that you're afraid to hear?
Nothing we're afraid to hear.
What is it you're afraid that the public
It's out of respect for other people.
It's out of respect, decency, and there's a
Yeah, ethical reasons.
There's a specific reason.
There's nothing that I'm going to say in here that no, that everybody doesn't already know.
So I'm, I'm erring on the side of caution.
President Lyman, there's a reason that this is one of the exceptions under the Obermeads Act of Illinois. And very clearly, specifically, this fits within the category number one. It wasn't listed third, fourth, 28th. It was number one, and it fits clearly and out of the right to do so. And as I believe our departed village administrator has been, has had her first life formed in a mind, her character assassinated more than enough. I think this is something that we should discuss in closed session. We've already voted.
This is what you want. It is.
I would not want my village administrator's character assassinated in the poll. I did not want that.
Government you deserve, and here he is, so let's go into executive session then.
Can we do it at the end, please?
Yes, okay. Well, then the only other agenda items that we have is item B. I could have a motion.
I would not be making this motion on grounds that our legal attorney has stated that we don't have a hold on the seat on the board.
I would like the way is not be making this motion.
Okay.
I will not be making a motion. I will not be making a motion because the village council is politically provided opinion. There is no legal ambiguity. I will not be making this motion.
Okay. Then, Rich, I would defer to you, but if you were to make a motion, it's not likely to be seconded. Is that the safe assumption? Then that would bring us to item C. The discussion of appointment of Jim Carlini as office of village trustee. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this?
Just, what is your other attempted appointment?
There is no, there's no discussion like I'll make a comment. I prepared, actually, a written statement.
No, 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 we're gonna do that in the executive session.
No, that's not
A discussion.
I'm Jim Carlini.
Yes, this is the type of With the consent of the village board, I would like to make this public statement. In the United States of America, governments are designed with two features that hinder corruption and abuse. The first of those features is that governments by design act slowly and deliberately. Anytime a government body or official acts hastily or secretly, it should raise the eyebrows of concern of anyone who favors a republican form of government. Secondly, governments are designed specifically to not put too much power in the hands of any one individual. This is the reason boards and congressional bodies are informed. Any idea that a bureaucratic politician puts forth must pass the scrutiny of their peers in order to be passed. Last Monday, June 7, President Lyman decided, five minutes before board meeting, to end the appointment of East Dundee's village administrator. He did this in secrecy without notifying the village board or with counsel of the village's legal counsel for legal documents that would protect the village's interests. He did this unilaterally, without gaining or even asking for the support of the village board. While Illinois municipal law does allow a village president the authority to dismiss an administrator without the initial consent of the board on an emergency basis, the president much shortly thereafter presents his or her reasoning for the dismissal of board consent and approval. Again, this method of dismissal is for emergency purposes and is certainly not the ethical or republican way of handling this situation, which would have been to do so with the backing of the village board. This week, we are once again faced with more unilateral, unilateral actions from our village president. In our election on April 6, both trustees Saviano and Britton were duly elected and have since taken their seats on the board and served admirably. Since only two candidates ran for three open seats, this left one seat open on the board. The board asked our village council what the appropriate law states regarding filling the open seat. On April 22, our village council provided guidance in the form of legal opinion that stated that any trustee's seat was not automatically vacated at the end of their elected term, and that, in fact, they were, and I quote this, "not only entitled, but were also obligated to exercise the functions and duties of their office." That quote is not from our legal council, but actually in an appellate court decision involving similar circumstances. Village council also noted the means by which the seat can be vacant. Either by the trustee denouncing their seat through a notarized letter or by the village board declaring their seat vacant. At the time, we had three outgoing trustees. Former trustee Wood, trustees Wood and Sella both turned in such notarized letters declaring their seats vacant. Trustee Andreessen chose not to, submitted notarized documents stating his intent to remain and thus retaining his seat on the board until the village board declares his seat vacant for the next election. To date, the board has chosen not to declare trustee Andreessen's seat vacant. On May 13, the village council provided a second legal opinion supporting trustees Andreessen's claim to his board seat. All in all, we have the advice of our lawyer, state law, case law, and even words from legislative floor in Springfield that support the position that the board has taken in this case. We had tried that legally, deliberately, and in the public light. To that effect, the board released two legal opinions given by our council on May 24 for public scrutiny. To date, we have received no feedback from East Dundee residents asking us to reverse course and declare trustee Andreessen's seat vacant. That's notwithstanding, I suppose, the public comment that we had today, so I don't need to dismiss your statements. Despite all this, President Lyman pushes forth attempting to appoint trustees to the board with no legal vacancies. This week, we learned through the press that Lyman intends to push this all the way to a court for review, which will force the board to use taxpayer dollars to defend our position. For the interest of the village of East Dundee, the village board asks and implores President Lyman to drop his attempt to fill the village board seat that is already legally filled with the consent of the board, filled by Scott Andreessen. We ask and implore President Lyman to stop wasting village resources and taxpayer dollars on his personal crusade. We ask President Lyman to instead focus on matters important to the residents of East Dundee, whom we all collectively serve.
Great. Well-written trustee Coonsy, well-written trustee Andreessen.
Just for the record, Scott, nothing to do with writing that. And I actually am quite offended by the notion that I did, as if I can't perform And I actually am quite offended by the notion that I did, as if I can't perform my own thoughts.
Anything you apply to. I would just, I would just like to announce to the public that my decisions to place Frank Scarpelli and Jim Carlini as appointees to this seat that Scott Andreessen currently holds is a matter of ordinance and I'm bound to do that. I have absolutely no intention of shirking that responsibility and whether or not we all either collectively or partially agree or disagree is not of any consequence. I'm sorry, but this is what I am legally bound to do.
That is not true. It's not true. You've got, you must be located.
I mean, with the evidence.
Well, because now it's loose. Your obligation, your obligation on rights to fill a seat only is triggered when there's a legally vacant seat.
There you go.
So since if there's a legally vacant seat, this obligation to keep using your sound points or does not apply.
Okay. If, if, I'm sure that if the people who are on the board that support this notion have true confidence in their position, there wouldn't be any need for the support that they brought your time, so.
That's true.
That's fine, that's fine. All I'm telling you is that I am duty bound, by ordinance, to appoint two people within the first sixty days of this new administration and that's what I'm doing, is what.
The more that he's saying it, the more you're going to believe it, but it's still not true.
Okay, thank you, trustee. You're awesome.
And actually, I would just remind the, the public that for better part of eight or nine weeks, we've been asking President Lyman to provide any kind of legal support for the position that he keeps pounding and to date, we have received nothing.
Right, okay. Thank you, Scott. Okay, financial reports.
I mean, to have a tax get away with it, Eric, but you know, it happens sometimes.
We have nothing for financial reports, actual board reports, village president. If anybody would like to understand a little bit more about where I'm coming from for the decision that I made, you're free to call me and we'll discuss it. We'll go around the room, trustee Saviano, do you have anything to, trustee Triber?
No reports.
Trustee Coonsy, you can go for it. Trustee Mahoney?
Um, sure, yeah, it's Flag Day, everyone. Let's break up this tension a little bit. It's Flag Day, unfortunately, we were not able to hold a ceremony like we usually do because Dolores Bowline, who's a big push behind that, is out of the, is out of state today. But she does ask that we just all take the time to take a look at our red, white, and blue, and if you have one at your home, take a look, make sure it's in good order. We actually just by fluke put up a brand new one yesterday that, because our old one was tattered, so, one nation.
Okay, trustee Andreessen?
Oh, well, in addition to being Flag Day, it's National Bourbon Day and I'm definitely thinking a few of us are going to drink. I would also just say that, you know, with regard to a, when we're tributing somebody, whether you have a right to or not, there's a certain level of decency and human compassion that needs to be involved. And there's a way to do it while still honoring your obligations or your duties or doing what you feel is the best issue of the village without absolutely laying somebody on the altar for no other reason other than vindictiveness. And I think the way that the last week, the two weeks has gone has been fairly disgusting to me as a human being, as a resident, a business owner, and a trustee of the village of East Dundee. I think it's sad. And I hope that we would all expect a little bit more of ourselves and the people that we like to represent us. It's just, there was no excuse there, it's just, it's just indecent. I have no regard to that.
Thank you, trustee Jordan.
I just have another question. With regards to your last comment, President, this was excerpted from a May 13th memo that I sent to you with regards to my explanation on not forwarding the motion previously, I sent that to you on May 19th. And this comes from the village's legal council, May 13th memo. Quote, "State law does not impose a legal obligation on the village president and board of trustees to declare a vacancy for a village trustee's seat that is unfulfilled because a person failed to qualify for that office." Sixty-five ILCS, five dash, three point one, dash, ten, dash, fifty, C1. As such, the village president and board of trustees do not have a mandatory duty to declare a vacancy fully unfilled, village trustee's seat currently held by Scott Andreessen, for which no person qualified for it can be called up in 2021 election. The village president and board may declare a vacancy at any time, the decision of and if and when a vacancy is fair of that seat may be made by your collective decision and discretion. This conclusion is consistent with our communications with the village president and board trustees. Close quote.
Great, thank you. Chief?
No reports.
Okay, since you're the only staff here, oh, I'm sorry, my name. I have no report. Okay, do you have any questions? Thank you so much. Take us to our next one, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody who would like to address the board on the non-agenda item?
I parked over here in the handicap parking lot and I waited about ten minutes before I came up here. This whole side of the building here is absolutely disgusting. How can you look at that?
I'm sorry, the condition of the building you're saying?
Yeah, look at the building outside.
Huh? You're talking about the village hog?
I'm talking about where the handicap parking lot is.
Okay.
You know, where the old police station was.
Right, right.
That whole side of the building. Why don't you clean it up or something?
Yeah, that's a really good idea, we'll try and earn some money. Yeah, that, you're, you're true, that needs to.
Well, get a paintbrush and do it yourself.
Well, okay, I've got practice in doing, uh, painting public buildings, I'll move on to the building.
I'll let you do something right now.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody else would like to address the board on the non-agenda item? Seeing none, okay. Well, then I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session, but thus then adjourn the meeting from executive, uh, from executive session.
Right, as appropriate, no, no action will be taken. Action.
I'll second.
Captain?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
For the reasons.
For the reasons stated in the agenda, yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Yes.
President Lyman.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming tonight. You don't have to go home.